Okay, welcome everybody. This is the City of Bonny Lake City Council Meeting for August 9th, 2022. Let's start by issuing a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, where can you go, roll three?
Mayor, it's Harris.
I'm here.
Justice Barrett Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Bullison.
Here.
Councilmember McLeimman.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
And we had a lag by Councilmember Evans because he fall away. He should get a gold star for attending. Okay, well, we had and then we don't. We don't have any agenda modifications right now, so we do have a presentation from Forever Green Trails. And would the Forever Green representative please approach the podium?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you so much. My name is Larry Levine. I'm the Executive Director of Forever Green Trails. And with me is Terry Reed, who's a local resident, so I'm gonna let him go first.
Greetings, everyone. I'm Terry Reed, well, you're President of Bonny Lake. And I've, in the past, I've been on the Parks Commission for a couple of years. I'm your current city representative to the county's Conservation Futures Advisory Board. And my term ends next year, so, you know, there'll be somebody needed to assign to take my place on that. But I'm also a board member of Forever Green Trails and also a member of the Plateau Trails Coalition. So I'm pretty involved in trying to make trails happen in this community. And I'd like to talk about the Fennel Creek Trail, which had had the opportunity with the council member Watson to walk on all the new phases, as well as Phase 1 of the trail on the 30th of July. It was Pierce County Trails Day, and we held an event there. About 15 people showed up, and then we met many people on the trails who were walking that day. They were surprised at how many people we met who were coming towards us when we were going the other direction. But, you know, the trail is a very unique and beautiful trail, you know, for a multi-purpose trail to go through wetlands and through forests like that. Very unusual for Pierce County, and it's perhaps one of the most beautiful trails I've been on in Pierce County. But, you know, there's still some things that, you know, are missing. I'd like to share some of my perspectives on that with you this evening. First of all, as I said, this is a really beautiful trail, but nobody, actually, nobody knows about it. And so there's a lot, a lot of an opportunity for the city to do things to increase the public's awareness of this trail. First and foremost, it's just basic signs. You can walk from the trail on the summer of monthly highway state and have no idea that this is a city-owned property, have no idea that this is the Fennel Creek Trail, have no idea how far you're going to go before you get to the trailhead on the other end. There's just some basic fundamentals with signage that can be done, you know, to increase the awareness as people drive by on summer of monthly highways. Oh, that's the Fennel Creek Trail, I've heard about that. Also, there's an opportunity, you know, to do some things with social media. I know Tom used Facebook and had a lot of response on posting some pictures of the trail on Facebook. So there's a lot of opportunity using to increase public awareness that way. And there's also some other basic things that trail will make it a more desirable experience for trail users. First and foremost is a, is a trailhead on this end of the trail. And I think eventually the target parking lot will, our goal will get tired of people using that parking lot as a trailhead. And there's some opportunities to develop a trailhead perhaps on the construction staging area that was used in the development of Phase 2 and 3. Another necessity, and this always is on the top of the list when you survey trail users, is a restroom. Having a restroom available on both ends of the trail would probably be a really positive thing to happen. Trails are connectors in the community, and right now, the Fennel Creek Trail is semi-connected, but it could be much more connected. And Pierce County, Pierce County has a trails plan that shows connections of the trail to Foothills Trail on the north, on the south side. And I think the latest version of that would go through Tohale. And then, on the north side, would be through the Lake Taps Bloom Trail to Butler. That would again connect to the, to the Bloom, to the Foothills Trail, and then eventually go across the river to Enopla 2. There's a lot of connectivity that could happen with that trail. Trails are very popular among trail users and residents. Typically, it's one of the top things, the priorities for parks to develop. There are also little mini economic engines as well because of fact that you're bringing people to a community, especially if there's events held on a trail, that there'd be a lot of, a lot more people coming to a community because of those events. And then property values, properties, homes that have valid, have access to trails have higher values. The trails are good for our community. Excited that as much as has been done, and there's a great deal of thanks to be given to the council and to the city administrators and staff who have made this happen. And there's a lot more to be done. And I know you're always thinking in terms of the cost of these things, and I think that's where Forever Green Trails can help come, come to your assistance in some ways. So I'll turn this over to Larry, and he can talk about the role that our organization can play in helping complete the work of Fennel Creek Trail. Thank you.
And who can I signal for a slide?
You have, uh, Ms.?
Yeah.
Okay. Hopefully, that will become apparent to me. So, good evening. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak. My name is Larry Levine, and I am the Executive Director of Forever Green Trails. And I'll just talk about what we do and how we can help your city. By the way, some of the images you're seeing, the ones on the right side, are from Fennel Creek Trail. A number of these are from Trails Day activities in the past. We organize a countywide annual event of active recreation promotion and stewardship promotion as well to help parks departments take care of their trail and parks. So we'd love to partner with anyone, whether it's the city chief. Forever Green Trails is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization based in Pierce County, and our mission, as you can see, is to support a system of trails throughout the region via education, advocacy, promotion, collaboration, and stewardship. We envision a connected Pierce County that provides for affordable and active recreation and mobility for all users, abilities, and income levels, because we know that leads to a happier, healthier populace and contributes to social justice, increased property values, promotes tourism, and strengthens local economies. The map, which represents the planned regional trail map for Pierce, Pierce County, has relatively few of the, the solid green lines which are connected, the completed trails. The red dash lines represent undeveloped trails, so we have a long way to go, as you can see. But my organization does not build trails. Instead, we serve public by promoting trail use and stewardship, as I mentioned, and by supporting the jurisdictions like yours that build and maintain the trails that the public uses and loves. We do this through our events, projects, and programs. And rather than rattle all those off out of respect for your time, I will just suggest that you visit our website so you can learn more about these events. But I will just point out that coming up at the end of next month is the Pierce County Trails Conference, and I would encourage you to consider going. What I would like to focus on, though, are our programs, particularly the financial partnerships and the Trail Accelerator Program. But first, why, why is my organization needed? This slide shows a table from the Pierce, Pierce County's Long Range Parks Plan that shows that Pierce County lags other similar jurisdictions in terms of trail maps per capita. Trail development can be expensive, and competition for limited grant funds can be fierce. Forever Green Trails can help you raise local match dollars for trail projects and win planning and development grant funding. We supply, we supply support for all jurisdictions in our service. We can help improve comprehensive recreation and mobility plans. We promote active recreation and stewardship via Trails Day. And we, and we also, as Terry, we also write letters of support for grants and legislative budget requests. In fact, we supplied one for your Phase 3 of Fennel Creek Trail. Your staff had applied with the state DOT for a pedestrian and bicycle program grant, and we were very happy to support that and encourage you always to have staff inquire with us. We're very happy to do that. However, we can do much more for your community. We can keep your staff in the loop about important recreation and mobility grant programs and training opportunities. As a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we can collect tax-deductible donations for your trail project. We got access to private foundations to support trail planning and development. We can host what we call Trail Accelerator Program Fund Drives on our website that raise local match funds and increase the likelihood of you receiving project grant awards. We can apply for state, regional, and federal grants on your behalf, something particularly important for smaller jurisdictions who are hit disproportionately by staff turnover. We provide important governmental affairs services to help support proper funding for parks, trails, and active mobility, and can support specific asks that your city has at the state legislature or with your federal representatives. We try to both grow the pie and help you get more of it when it comes to trail funding. There are other benefits to Membership in Forever Green Trails, and I can, once again, I'll just refer you to our website for details, or you can have, you or your staff can contact us. In short, we're delivering real value for our member jurisdictions. We would love to work with the City of Bonny Lake. There are literally billions of dollars flowing annually from the federal infrastructure legislation. And Move Ahead Washington also significantly increased funding for trails, too. Together, we can continue to develop the Fennel Creek Trail and, for the benefit of your citizens, connect it to the larger regional trail network. I hope that you'll try to find and like us online. We're on social media as well. Look at our website, once again, it's forevergreentrails.org. And I hope that you'll stay in touch and contact me if I can be of any service or any of the opportunities that I mentioned are of interest to you. And I thank you once again for the opportunity to speak today, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have now or in the future at any time. Thank you so much.
Mr. Levine, now to open the floor to any questions. Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I invited gentlemen here tonight because I was really impressed by our trail we put together, which was a challenge for us to get completed. But walking with them and seeing the amount of people there that day, we saw a gentleman who was jogging down there. We saw another person with a stroller pushing her baby through the whole trail area. I mean, walking down with two young children back there. The variety of people was just very impressive. I was like, yes, I found the trail. And if you didn't see it on Facebook, through different, two different social sites in our city, I posted pictures, and the amount of people, several hundred people, said they liked it. Obviously, obviously, there's some people that don't like it there, but the majority of people are so excited to walk this new trail and see that we helped put together it within there. So if you haven't walked it yet, I don't know if Councilmember Evans has walked the trail. You should. It's a beautiful trail, and obviously, we need more of those in the future. Obviously, it's going to be expensive, but with their help, other grants available, it could get you to make this go onto on your park and then go from there. So we embrace this, the future, and see, back to what I'm talking about, the parks, the future. Our system looks for something to go, some places to do, and this is a valuable asset where they can go to from Walmart and walk on the trail. There is a possible trailhead that's parked on halfway down on the other end there. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming today.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Watson. Councilmember Baldwin, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, okay. How about Councilmember Evans or Mr. Hamilton? I know that you are online. Do you have a question, Mr. Levine?
I just wanted to say thank you very much. I have rode my bike on it several times. I've walked it. It sure makes you feel out of shape when you make it from one end to the other back. And it's a great trip. It's a great trail. Any help we can get, I think we should take advantage of. I know, like Councilmember Watson said, when, when I walked it with my neighbor, there was no less than 20, 25 people on there running, biking, kids with scooters. They've already, art, I don't think it's the Arts Commission, but there's kids out there that are making fun with it, with, you know, finding the ants, and they're doing chalk ants and chalk frogs and kind of making a game out of it as you're walking the trail. So it's, it's beautiful in and of itself, but it's also now interactive with some of the residents or people that are using that. So it's, it's great, and I know it's expensive. I think it's a great investment in the city for the future. It leads up to the stairs now, which will lead you up to 410 eventually over to the Park and Ride if we can get any public transit. It's a great access for that side of the city, and I want to say thanks to everyone that worked hard on it. And if we can move on to the next phase and get it across the street to Kelly Fields and then up to Allen York, it's just going to make us even better, and I really appreciate everyone that worked on it. And we've had a few retirements of those that helped put it together, John Woodcock in Engineering and Gary Leaf. I mean, this wouldn't be anything without Gary. So thanks, everyone, for putting that together, and I can't wait to see the next phase happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Evans. I did have a couple of questions. Actually, one question and one observation. The fact that we do need to literally know where they can access and, and get that done. So certainly in agreement with that and its concern. But when you were showing your slide, you, you said you got grant money, but then you said you raised the money. What, what sort of organization do you have? Would that be with the private foundations that you were mentioning, or how would you go about?
Thank you for asking that question. We have successfully applied to private foundations for grant funding or trail projects. In addition, we can host, I made very quick reference, reference to a program we call Trail Accelerator Program. That's a partnership where we host a donation portal on our website, working with a jurisdiction. It's our three, three entity partnership, the jurisdiction, Forever Green Trails, and usually you have a specific organization or individuals in the community. We call them community boosters. Maybe, maybe sometimes they're a pain in your butt because they're always asking for trails, but now you can monetize on their, that energy, and they can help you get the word out to the community. And we work together, we craft the message, and we put that out in the community and drive folks to the website to make donations to the specific trail project. The object is not to pay for a significant portion of the trail, rather it's to demonstrate widespread community support for trails. These things earn you extra points with grant agencies like the Recreation and Conservation Office at the state level, but also the Puget Sound Regional Council, which gets a lot of the federal dollars that flow through, and even some direct DOT grants. Really important things to do. It's not just that, you know, filling out the grant application. You gotta work all the angles, elite competition, and we will help you get, you know, or with both finish line and get grant awards for you. So while that, that Trail Accelerator Grant Program does raise some of the local match dollars that you will need for your grant applications, it's also about earning those extra points. It's that secret, the secret sauce, if you will. And we successfully have leveraged over $1 million for Pierce County doing that. We're poised to leverage another $3 million for them. And my message is, don't let Pierce County have all the fun. We can, we're here for all the jurisdictions, so at any time, and I'm happy to help. And I understand you, you do have some staffing shortage to deal with, so once you, maybe once you get the house in order, we can, we can talk and get coordinated.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Levine. Don't take this the wrong way, but you do look like a really good angle worker, so hopefully we can take advantage of your talents. Okay, Councilmember Baldwin.
Well, I guess the, the big question here is, in the second section in your presentation, you had said that there are fees.
Yes.
And so what, what is the range of those types of fees? Because it seems like where we can get the most benefit would be, you know, in the second section. But, you know, we're being a bit, other people's planning, so I'm just, I'm curious, yeah.
Yeah, we have the ability to do sort of à la cart work, if you will. We're just contracted by the City of Edgewood to help them with their presentation of the Recreation and Conservation Office. So they're, they're paying, and but still, by consulting rates, a good deal. That is $100 an hour that we're working for that. But for jurisdiction members, it's $50 an hour. For, and membership fees are based on population size. So for Bonny Lake, with your population, it's $1,000 is a membership to Forever Green Trails. There are lots of other, so that's what unlocks your ability to do the front drive and for us to write grants for you on your behalf, etc. But the return on investment's pretty, pretty huge. And there are other benefits as well. You have to send staff to, or, or collect it to our conference in the fall. So we're happy to, we can talk about that after I can help you and your staff understand the full range of it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Levine.
Thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate it, and congratulations on your trail.
You can thank Councilmember Watson for that.
Thank you, Larry.
All right, now we do move, we do have a public hearing tonight. Madam Court, could you read your orders?
This is a public hearing on enacting a Business and Occupation Act, adding new chapters to the Bonny Lake Municipal Code to be known as Business and Occupation Act and Business and Occupation Act Administrative Code and Propagating for Restful Randoms.
Okay, now, I will open the public hearing. This would be your time to address the council on the item under public hearing. You would have five minutes. I believe you probably heard our little chirping sound before that did not apply to the presentation. But if you wish to come to the podium to, to address this issue, please state your name and address for the record when called upon, and and we do have our list here, so that would be Dan Decker. Mr. Decker. You can approach.
This microphone is a little bit.
It doesn't sound long.
Yeah.
I won't be speaking.
I promise, we didn't just turn it on for you, Mr. Decker. There we go.
We can hear him on this end.
Oh, good, thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. Mayor, Council, Dan Decker, in the 2477th Street, Bonny Lake, as a nonpartisan council member. And I just want to say, BNO tax is just fine. It says, so why are we going to follow in the footsteps of a government that's giving away trillions and trillions of dollars in causes? That would be the Democratic Socialist Party that's running our government right now. I'm saying that if we're going to spend money, all we're going to do is create inflation. If we're going to create a tax right now, all we're going to do is help that inflation grow. City of Bonny Lake, I understand, needs the money because they've overspent. Well, if you've overspent, go look in the mirror and ask yourself one question. What can we do about this overspending besides taking more money from the people in the City of Bonny Lake? It's not just the businesses you're taking the money from, the BNO tax. You're taking it from every single person that walks into any store in the City of Bonny Lake. And I understand it's a $1 million beginning on that tax, but that's this week. Next week, it'll be $50. All you gotta do is make $50, your BNO tax will be there. The government has one agenda, and that's to take money any time it can get money, and it will take a penny every chance it gets from anyone that will give it to you. When I say you, that's the third person. Any government is that way. And so I'm saying, this BNO tax doing nothing but causing more inflation, causing more hardship for the businesses of the City of Bonny Lake, and doing nothing more than satisfying government who is overspent. We don't need to be satisfying a government that is overspent. We need to be looking at the government that overspends and get them to realize that they are overspending. And so, government, please stop overspending. Step back and look at what's going on. Federal government caused this inflation by giving away trillions and trillions of dollars and gold. And one very important thing, they closed down the gas oil flow to the people, saying that they need all the electric. That's crap. What they need to do is stop looking at their own selves in the mirror and smiling at how wonderful they aren't. You know, last time I spoke about the BNO tax a few weeks ago, a person said to me, I don't care what you're going to say about it, I'm voting for the tax. Well, somewhere I heard someone, what his mother says, stupidity is as stupid as. Well, let's not get too much inflation going in the City of Bonny Lake like we already have. Let's take care of our people, that'd be the businesses, and stop digging holes for them to be buried in. Our government needs to really look back and reflect on what's going on. I understand you need this money for a park? Well, wait a minute, we already have parks. You've already spent millions of dollars on the Allen York Park in the last year or so. Let's step back and not spend money. Let's look forward and save money. I mean, if I spend every penny I ever got, no, that'll never happen. But the point is clear. If you can't save money, then there's something wrong. Not finished, thank you. And I won't be talking if this isn't, thank you, guys.
Next, we have Erin, is it Mus? Muskie.
Hello, my name is Erin Muskie. My address is 13309 E. D. Avenue, Court. I actually live in Puyallup. You'll have to forgive me, this is the first city council meeting I've ever attended, and I was hoping to share an update about the library because I am the new senior librarian there. Is this the right time to do that? If not, I will cede my time to whoever's next.
That would actually be done under the citizen comment, which is the next.
Okay, and I will wait for that.
Okay. And I do know that we did have little, this does say public hearing participation. But to scratch out, it would be that, Korea, would your commentary be on the BNO tax?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Council, my name is Zach Korea, and I'm manager of 5005 Main Street to Combe, Washington. I am here tonight on behalf of MultiCare Health Systems. I'm just speaking about the BNO taxes, public hearing. So just a bit of background, MultiCare is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We are community-based, and we serve the entire South Town region, and just a few years ago moved over to the middle part of the state. In Bonny Lake itself, we have five different locations. We have the freestanding emergency room, as well as the Indigo Primary, or Urgent Care Clinic right off of 410, as well as our Women Health Center, Sports and Occupational Therapy, pediatric primary care clinic, and medical testing and imaging laboratory over in the medical office building. So quite a few locations, one of our municipalities divided out by one of our top locations for staff and medical services outside of hospitals. So we do not have shareholders, and our governing boards are made up of members of our local communities that are volunteers. They don't get paid a cent besides maybe a cup of coffee to get or a board meeting. But to be a nonprofit does not just mean that we don't seek But to be a nonprofit does not just mean that we don't seek profit. It also means that we have to provide something to the communities that we serve. So particularly in Bonnie Lake, we provide the youth engagement services through our Mary Brakes Children's Hospital to the summer Bonnie Lake School District, which at a recent count provided over 400 services for screening for mental health and behavioral health challenges that students face, particularly in the past, you know, two years or so with the pandemic and areas between, or changes back and forth for distance learning and the changes going back to in-person learning. Also during the pandemic, we provided telehealth counseling services, so directly providing providers with students that need it. And then as well as incorporating them into the kids, the kids' mental health Pierce County Services, providing further areas of that as mental health, behavioral health, or other primary care needs that they may need to succeed in school. Like everyone nowadays, we are feeling the effects of this pandemic, both still with COVID as well as with secret patients due to delayed care or postponed surgeries. And as of currently right now, most of our hospital beds are occupied, with most of our hospitals near or exceeding 100% bed traffic. But differently, we're, as well as now, as I was spoken about, the inflation and the cost of labor as well as supplies has risen. And what makes it a little bit different for us as an organization affected by this tax is that we still have to provide our services. So even if we can't get, things cost more or a contractor might be delayed, we still have to provide our medical services that we're offering to communities. So someone comes into our emergency room, even though it's full, we're still going to provide the care. And even though it might cost us to get nurses in or provide for specialist physicians, we're still going to do that to make sure that our community is well cared for. Of course, the result of that is that there's higher costs on our end. And as of currently right now, MultiCare is about a $195 million loss on the current year providing care to our communities. And that is particularly why we're today going to ask for an exemption to the VNO tax for either nonprofits or specifically medical nonprofits, just specifically because of this drastic shortfall that we're facing. Even though that's for the whole system, every bit adds up, and every bit adds to our challenges that we're facing. Don't get it wrong, we do support parks. They're pillars of healthy communities as well as good governments. It's also good for health and well-being of everyone. And also, particularly the parks here, there's a lot of reason why a lot of our nurses, physician, and our team members may choose to make Bonnie Lake their home. It's a good community. Last weekend, I had the opportunity to drive up here on the way to Mount Rainier and was able to take a look around. It's a pretty good community, so you can see why a lot of our physicians. So with that said, we would ask for an exemption to the Bonnie Lake VNO tax. Or we can also work out, figure out another way to either raise the current nonprofit exemption to levels that we can be able to continue to sustain the level of care that we're providing to Bonnie Lake and everyone else that uses these services in the area. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Korea. Why did they name it Indigo? Do you know?
Um, so I started last year with MultiCare. So I'm not sure of the history. I believe Indigo was the organization that was already existing, providing care. And then we were able to partner with, well, be able to provide those higher well services. You know, someone comes in with a broken arm, that's broken, but you need to go to the emergency, be on this sort of like a test or something.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, next we have Ken Lewandowski.
For the citizen comments.
Okay. And I believe that is all that we would have for the public hearing that we had. Now, as far as the ordinance itself, Deputy Mayor, when is this on the agenda to act? Okay. All right, and then we'll get to that. Okay. Last chance for anybody to approach the podium for public commentary on this proposed ordinance. Okay, I will now close the public hearing, and we will go on to some commentary. So Ms. Musky, if you wish to approach.
Hello again, Council. As I mentioned, my name is Erin Musky. I am the new senior librarian at the Bonnie Lake Library. It was not difficult for me to come to this meeting tonight. I wanted to share some news with you that we are very excited about. We are planning to undergo a refresh this late fall. That's going to bring some new upgrades to the library. They'll have new paints, they'll have new furniture, they'll have new restrooms. And we are very much looking forward to these changes. There will be a bit of hardener dust while it's going on, but we anticipate that in very late 2022 or early 2023, we'll have everything completed. And at that point in time, if not before that, we certainly invite you all to take that short walk across the parking lot and take a look at our new. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Musky. Okay, now, Miss Lewandowski.
Hello, so my name is Kim Lewandowski. My address is 20811 Church Lake Drive East. And I would like to speak about the middle housing grant that I believe is going to be discussed later today. So I would respectfully request that the city council reconsider restoring the development rights to Church Lake by leaving the zoning classification as R1. I also just think it's important to understand that the development rights of the Church Lake area that is R1 is because that's what the community members of the area requested back in 2008. So back in 2008, the community actually advocated to have the zoning changed from R2 to R1. And the community members went before the city council to have ordinance 1297 established. And today, I really strongly urge for this ordinance to be left as is. I did have an opportunity to email Justin Evans, and there was a document of the petition that was submitted back in 2008 during those city council meetings, as well as the Planning Commission. There was multiple public hearings, and I did email those documentations as well. So my understanding, we did send that to a number of city council members. So I believe and I'm hoping that that was all reviewed and said that when it comes to the zoning, it's very much something that the community advocated for. It was nothing that the city took away. So according to the briefing memorandum dated June 22nd of 2002, the Planning Commission actually also provided a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the classification of Church Lake to be rezoned to R1. So I would request that the city finds alternate options to reach the requirements of the periodic update, which is associated with the city's comprehensive plan pursuant to RCW 3670A.070 (Q). I also think that's important to understand that there is, besides Church Lake rezoning, that there was mention in the actual application itself for the middle grant that, that 5.2 indicates that all of R1 would have townhomes allowed to be built there as well. So I just think it's important to make sure that all the information is out and that you all can make the best educated decision when it comes to voting for the grant. Again, I am strongly advocating that this grant is voted down, and then it allows you all the opportunity to work more diligently with the public. And we can maybe work together and find other means to meet the requirements that are being passed down from, I guess, state legislatures or legislators. Because I just don't think that it's necessarily appropriate that 30%, which is what the grant is calling for, is going to be associated to just one area. If it's something that needs to be a part of Bonnie Lake, then it should be something that's spread across that entire city itself, as well as we don't really have all the information, understanding what that percentage actually is, what the income bands look like, where we are as a city in terms of what our achievable score, those amounts are. So I think it's really hard to say that we're going to do a grant if we don't know the targets and we're not able to set the goals to achieve.
All right, thank you very much. I love history lessons. We only have one council member who was there at the time, so. Okay, that's all that I have on the list. Do we have anybody else who wishes to approach the podium? You'll have five minutes to make any sort of substantive commentary.
Hello, I'm Mitchell Rose, 7421 207th Avenue. I'm here to speak on the midhousing grant. I'm advocating that it is voted down. Our road systems can't support a influx of people that are matched into an R2 zone, being multiplexes, quadplexes, all that. Bonnie Lake has that small-town feel still. And I get that the successful city, you want to continuously grow. But the thing is, you can't put the cart before the horse. So we all understand if anybody drives up 410 between 4:00 and 6:00, that it's basically parking a lot from the pub house on a, or below. So I'm just here to ask for you guys to consider the midhousing grants and to ask that you look, you know, deep into it and see how, not only it's going to cost the city money to improve all the infrastructure, but to do it and to go through all the birthing pains of making all the infrastructure, road closures, corruption, think of the value of life for the average citizen, how it's going to affect them. Not only that, but with low-income housing, there's a stereotype that it does bring in a certain small percentage of people that do have a higher chance to commit crimes in neighborhoods. And we have multiplexes and quadplexes and all that. We have renters that come. It's shown that renters are less involved in the community. Think of family households are, I think, desirable when people live on a street, you don't want to live next to a condominium or, you know, a multiplex. And I know at least in my street and in my neighborhood, we have a great sense of community. I've met some amazing people from all walks of life, all ages, and a lot of us come together to help each other. And I just don't want to see renters come in that don't have a connection to the community and don't want to have connection because they know that they're not going to be there for very long, people that grow families and live long and enjoy their life in a beautiful city. So, thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else who would be good to the org?
He called you old, Dan.
I know. You were before me.
Experience would be.
Very sorry. Points I'd like to make basically are, this is coming down from higher up, or it's from DC to Washington to Bonnie Lake. What happened in California, and essentially in California now, it's illegal to have single-family zoning. It has to be done by the state. They make decisions on local zoning, and they are aiming for us. We have several condos that were built for the change. They've been problems, we've dealt with them. Currently, I'm informed that at least one of those condo complexes is being rented out as duplexes. In other words, you have two families, one in the above, one below, and that there is somebody that's rented living space in garages that have been stuck next to. That's not doing well, as far as having people come and go as you really would like to have. What will happen if this is changed is what was planned last time, and that was developers will move in and buy up the mobile homes and the construction, light construction homes, and they'll start building what they want to as far as duplexes and everything else. So if somebody believes that they're immune from this because they don't have, and currently look around, that's a real change very fast. I would say, basically, I would request that the city council not go after the grant, tell the state of Washington, council answers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else who would be good to the org? Okay, let's move on. We don't have any correspondence tonight, so next we'll have committee reports. Finance Committee.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee met today at 5:00. Councilmember Baldwin signed, or Councilmember Evans, who was absent. We had our reports and presentations, the personnel update. We met Brian Sandley, HR manager. And then we have a new person, Russell Schaub, as assistant planner, starting September 1st. And then we've had several new people start August. They went to all of that. But we had our business action items, 8022109, the resolution 3070, the Attorney General's void void settlement dissipation. Basically, that was talked about with the city prosecutor. There's a, as we've talked about previously, a lawsuit that has been going on with pharmaceutical companies. Bonnie Lake will end up getting 21%, approximately, of somewhere around $430,000, which is very low for us, but it might be. We had a approval of our minutes, and then we had a discussion on 8022119, which will be resolution 3077, which was an agenda item that was added and removed the last minute here. And that is a resolution of the city council, authors of the mayor's contract with the major economic link for provision of commissioning and agent services for Severset, Harrison, the Public Works Center. New one, in regards to HVAC and whatnot being checked out is something that was the budget that you can carry or whatnot just being through. It was added last minute because it came up pretty quickly today. Jason will talk it, Ryan will talk it, recover. Most of today, we have this thing done. But we wanted to make sure that we had a chance to see it and whatnot, so people will be looking at it next week. And that concluded everything.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Johnstone, you really watched air conditioning that day? Okay, next we have the Community Development Committee. Yeah, I'm sorry I missed it. Thank you, Councilmember Swann. Lastly, we have the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin Gavin. Oh, go ahead, Tom.
Kevin was on vacation, but he is really nice to join us tonight. I was stepping in for him for public safety, and we had a very robust discussion on a number of subjects. Let's start off with East Park Fire Rescue was not able to attend. They did talk about, and they're listening to us, that they're having the groundbreaking forestation 111 here in Bonnie Lake on August 22nd. They also have an official fire report now for lake tax. Had a part before, but wasn't the right ones, and they have a real good one now, so well covered out there. And I'm sure police are glad to have that too. Talk about burn bans and so on. Our biggest discussion was about the police department, the amount of issues down Allen North Park. We had a lot of park conditions that you're aware of. We've got one night, our officers stay afterward and clean up the trash down there. They had four bags of trash, including alcohol, and they're picking up. And they're trying to address them in several ways, which we haven't resolved it yet. It's an ongoing challenge for us. But as you know, crime is, is increasing dramatically in our city. And the stats we received from inside are, some areas are fully area worth and go from here, public can control that. And they also had a meeting with park department, trying to get a solution down there. They're actually, they've put together some signs to help close the area that we've been accessing. Participants are people down there and help control the problem. So we're making some baby steps, making some changes though. And we, also, council was going to be a problem last year and that's here too, so that's moving forward with that. And I had a good presentation for emergency management, Mr. Keith Creel, and talking about our comprehensive energy manager program planning forward. We'll get the deck to us here in the near future. Our buying alert system is just about ready to go, so they'll put that out to social media. It's going forward, so they'll be able to tell citizens what's happening in our community, any problems, or any issues that way. She discussed in detail about the activation levels for alerts in our city, red, green, She discussed in detail about the activation levels for alerts in our city, red, green, and yellow, we know they'll be activated, so we're aware of that coming forward. They actually have the senior center pulling students, we have one person show up for it, but at least we have available people they need it, so that plan is going forward for the future. Prosecutor gave a nice, good presentation about what's going on there, and we have the same problem as in police, as in prosecution, their numbers have increased dramatically. And I asked about jails, where to put people at, and that's a problem we have with the police. They're arresting people stealing cars, and they're back on the streets again. And Dana has the same problem with where to put these people, or habitual crime problems. So they're working, keeping those in other locations, including up in Broadway. And we have one agenda bill that's going to prove, it's on your percentages tonight, that's AB 2210.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Watson. I can tell you that our problems do extend beyond the city limits, and I've been talking with other mayors about how thinking outside the box as far as the organized retail debt that is on the rise. Even talk has gone on to getting some business lessons from, say, like Target and many retailers, favorites who aren't participating in that. And of course, that's news to you. At least we're aware of.
A car accident is terrible.
Oh, it's horrible.
Talking about one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we don't have any other reports that I can see, so let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has been adopted. And now we have two full council issues, the first one being on what was discussed earlier, the middle housing grant. And Deputy Mayor Carter, your.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I brought this back as a discussion item because I was using email, and I don't think I've talked to anybody who said, yeah, this is a great idea. So I just wanted to bring this back as a discussion item, as where we need to go from here, if we want to not do this anymore, and get Jason, so I might here, he can give us some idea of what to do now, or where to go from here.
Okay, do we have any other discussion to move forward? Okay, Councilmember Swatman sends Councilmember Watson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So yes, I'd like to thank staff too for entertaining a couple council members. We have a council member, Fullerton, and Councilmember Baldwin, myself, the staff on this issue. So we were also concerned, because I don't think we quite understood at the council level of the detail at which the grant is very prescriptive. It has requirements in it that are the problem, that will, you know, undoubtedly, in my opinion, the city's going to have to comply with a bunch of housing issues anyways. Just because we do or don't do this particular grant does not mean that the city, in my estimation, will have to still comply with state law. Unfortunately, Mr. Sauber, I think we're probably going to get stuck, as you know, complying at some point in time, whether we like to or not. I agree with your sentiment, but unfortunately, the legal eagles will probably have us comply. But that brings us back to this grant, and I do not think that we should pursue this grant currently because of those prescriptive targets. I think we'd have much more latitude if we just passed on a grant. I realize it's a little bit of money there, but unfortunately, I will not be supporting the grant, and this is great to bring it back up, to give the staff early heads up if the council doesn't want to pursue the grant in the end, because they're going to have to do a bunch of work still to pursue the grant. So if they are aware that the council would not be probably going to accept the grant, they can just kind of like let it drop, and they don't have to, you know, get embarrassed by going out there and trying for something that the council's going to turn around and say, no, we don't want a roundabout, unfortunately.
Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with Mr. Swatman in his views. I didn't realize the background involved with this, and here's the time, when we first joined the council many years ago, and the grant fell, made sense to me, and we should go for that, but apprehending from the citizens and going down there looking around, I can see what they're talking about, understand that. We need to do any time, every time we can to keep our community looking small and have our roads set, have small neighborhoods in there, support those, and not, it was always a problem for us, so why put more burden on those smaller areas? So I would vote no for it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Watson. Is there anybody else, any further discussion? Councilmember Evans.
Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to all the citizens that wrote in. It was a very clear, clean, organized effort, and I think it got the attention of all of us council members. So thank you to everyone that did that. It was great to hear the history lesson on it. It was great to find out what their actual desires are for their own neighborhood, so I want to say thanks for that. Thanks to the staff for bringing it forward. I know it's going to be a little tougher budget cycle, but I think, you know, this is one of those one-time money things where I think we can probably come together as a council and maybe pull from our Indian Fund balance for a update of our plan in the future. So I would not be supportive of moving forward with this grant as written right now. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Evans. Did everybody hear that out there? It's a little hard to make it here. And Councilmember Fullerton.
I did have a question. I know we had like the 30% that is in the grant, where they were requiring 30% of the community to be changed from an R2 to an R1, or R1 to an R2, right? So I was wondering, in the future, is there a way that if these communities have with their HOA, can they write standards for their community that could stave off what the state might bring down that would help, or?
Not that we would enforce. So yes, any HOA can write CCNRs or private covenants, however, they are not enforceable by local government. So they would have to go to court and force those through civil action. So if somebody hypothetically had a CCNR that said you couldn't build duplexes, but the property was zoned for duplex, we would approve all the permits. They would have to then take that property owner to court and have that as a civil action fight. The city would not be able to.
I was just wondering if theirs, if their HOA would trump that, so.
No, it wouldn't. It wouldn't trump it in the sense that it would stop us from changing the zoning or stop us from approving things, but it would be possibly, you know, they would have to consult attorneys, whether or not there would be a course of action providing the mayor's CCNRs outside of the governmental action.
Just for the record, I am actually a no.
Any further discussion, Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes, I, oh, yeah, I echo the sentiment of everything that's being said here by council members. As you dig further and further into the, try to figure out more and more about these kinds of things, we say no to the grant now. And I've been in conversation with Kim about this, that there's still things that are going to be coming down from the state legislature. And so that's where, I guess, my question then becomes, what do we do then? You know, what do we do then when the legislature is putting more and more pressure on our city, who does not want to comply with what the legislature is telling us to do? And so just something to think about, I think, in the future, because it is still going to come down the pipeline. I will say, thank you so much, citizens, for coming and saying something, but I highly encourage citizens to get active, even in that higher level up at the legislature, because they are doing a lot to attempt to stop single-family housing all throughout the state. This is not just a here thing. It's all over that they are attempting to do it too. And so, yeah, I guess that's just something as a council, it's something we're going to have to think about, just, and I'm so thankful to the staff, even in our meeting, just trying to think of creative ways to figure out how to do right by our citizens. And so, yeah, I will be voting no.
Well, I can comment on the fact that the state did try to pass the law that took it out of municipal jurisdictions, all our hands, making those decisions failed. So it sounds like they're just trying to dangle the carrot here with grant. And Mr. Sauber, if you want, wish me a comment.
If I may, Your Honor. Very quickly, this is one of the premier fights in this country at this time. It's going to decide who controls local city, cities. Basically, it's hot down the effort from DC all the way down to Washington. I would like to respectfully suggest that at the next Small Cities Meeting, that a coalition be proposed, because this is not just a Bonning Lake issue, although smaller cities around us are looking at this as gassed as we are, and that the, there's more strength in numbers, and that a formal group might be formed to actually address the legislature, and in the courts if necessary, because that's the kind of fight we're going to have. Thank you.
And you didn't have to be respectful, Bobby. I thought I tried this. And I mentioned about the state, but I'm certainly not going to be honest with you have.
Okay, let's move on. We have item B on the full discussion issue. That would be the OND airports being proposed. I, oh, I'm sorry.
As we need to report back to the Department of Commerce, I request there'll be an official vote. The city council will not to accept or reject the grant, so that can be in contact with the Department of Commerce and say, per council action, we're not accepting the grant. I know there's been lots of talk, but because I have to go now back, because there was a motion for us to apply for the grant, I need to have a motion that I can take back to the Department of Commerce and say, they reconsidered and told us not to accept the grant. I just need something so that, there's clear council direction.
Yes, and you want that tonight, is that what you're asking?
I would prefer it so that we don't have to spend more time in Congress, if that's possible.
Now, Councilmember Reclines, I make a motion that we.
First, do you have a motion to take action tonight?
Yes. Okay, and is there any, is there any?
Yeah, we got to do this whole.
Right.
I have a motion to take action tonight.
Any seconds.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that that we haven't had, or? Okay, I believe we're ready to move forward. All in favor of accepting the grant on the middle, of the middle housing grant, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, well, no, no, that would be, it was that, it's like, yeah, okay, let's do it that way then. All in favor of rejecting the middle housing grant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we had one waiting aye on it, so we have none opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
For suggesting.
Thank you.
Okay, hopefully on item B, session on the airport, you can vote on the plateau, the discussion will be one word for me.
No.
How about, how about anybody else? Any, I don't know, forward to discussion, Councilmember Reclines?
Yeah, I would just like to point out that if you think the zoning is a top-down physical problem, that's trivial compared to this. So, yeah, the council really needs to send a better message that, and that we're protecting the expectations of the citizens that move here and sit in a parking lot every day and wait, right, to commute. So I would definitely be no as well, Mayor.
Yes. Well, and just for a full indication to the council, I had been approached by others about not necessarily heading up the mayoral commission, but being part of the mayoral commission that will address that sentiment publicly, so that will become. Oh, Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution was created, I think, it was brought to me initially by Councilmember Fullerton, and we kind of worked on drafting this thing, and this is my first one to write it, by the way. So I just wanted to mention things. I basically am looking for a council vote in the future, probably after in regards to this, and I wanted to know if there were any issues or anything with the resolution. So it sounds, at least so far, I reckon, issues with it as it's their giant pedal frame, go against, but in King County, which one to kind of put it out there exactly what it is that we're talking about as well.
And Councilmember Swatman?
Are there other cities that are doing the same, you know, like the Buckley and Ewing Club or something, so they have kind of a joint deal going on where it could be these cities?
Yeah, there are currently cities that are doing basically the exact same process that I'm doing.
Okay, any further discussion? Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so I was wondering if you've been in contact with any of the other cities, Councilmember Carter, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Carter? Have we been in contact with any of the other councils so we can maybe collaborate our resolution with theirs?
Right. I have not yet. That's on my agenda. I've been on vacation. That's my, my goal though, is to.
Okay, and, oh, Councilmember Baldwin.
I have been in contact with some Ewing Club city council members that are against this and are working towards something as well, so I think they would have no problem thinking in a joint effort, yeah.
And I was, in the discussion that I had, it seemed to be a little fusion, because they were saying that they could not put it in accounting to that population, across its parts, not yet, King County, so they don't know exactly what this is.
Okay, I believe that will be the end of discussion. We don't have any executive or closed session, and seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you for showing up, everybody.
Hi, Justin.
Hi, guys.
Yeah, I thought he said that.